Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education's Special Board Meeting. And we will now call our meeting to order. Dr. Flores, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I want everyone, please stand. Place your heart, place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you. Item 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. Dr. Flores.
I.
Mr. Tillman.
I. I.
Thank you. Dr. Hill.
I.
Mr. Gallo. Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Dr. Wyatt.
I.
And Gwen Rogers, I. Thank you. Motion carry. We will now enter into two point oh, closed session. Are there any closed session comments? Hearing none, then we are now going to go into closed session. We will return shortly, hopefully. All right, everyone, log out.
We were about, we were the only two in the room, and I said we need to log out.
I got lost in the other meeting. I'm back.
Oh, I didn't know Gwen was lost.
Barbara, I mean, Dr. Hill and I were in the other one.
Yeah, I saw her and I said, hey, we're in the wrong meeting. Thank you so much. We have returned back to our special board meeting, and we thank you again for being here for the Board of Education's special meeting, and we hope that you are able to capture a lot of information from this meeting as well. So we are now at 2.1. Oh, let me see. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no, we're not. We're at 3.1. And for middle school principal.
Read out.
And I have a readout for you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employees. Maynard Jacqueline, Middle School Principal, Devallejo, effective date, work year and salary to be determined. Funding 035 Freeman, Erin, Middle School Principal, Serrano, effective date, work year and salary to be determined. Funding 035. So moved to approve. Second. It's been moved and second. Is there any discussion? If not, let's vote. Dr. Flores.
I.
Mr. Tillman.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Dr. Wyatt.
I.
Gwen Rogers, I. Thank you so much, and I know we are in virtual world, but we want to congratulate both of our new principals. We know you will do a great job. We're so excited. Can't wait to see you personally. Dr. Volkmer, did you have any other comments?
No, the board, thank you for the approval. We're just very excited about these two members of our team coming on board as principals. We have absolutely complete confidence in them, know they're going to do a great job, leading their staffs to better academic outcomes and great, great things for kids. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. 4.0, 4.1, as we move on, opening the public hearing. 4.1 Annual Service Plan and Budget for 2020, 2021 Special Education.
President Rogers, Dr. Menores does have a few comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. We've actually invited Nareda Gutierrez, our Assistant Director for our Special Education Programs and our SELPA, to just share briefly with the board the purpose of the SELPA plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, President Rogers, interim Superintendent Dr. Volkmer, members of the Board and Cabinet. I am Nareda Gutierrez, your Assistant Director of Special Education, and I'm here to present to you the SELPA Annual Budget and Service Plan. I'm going to mean a special education local plan is required to submit a local plan to the California Department of Education for approval. The plan has two primary functions, which is to assure access to our special education and related services for students residing within the geographic areas served by the plan and assuring compliance with all federal and state laws, codes, statutes, and regulations. So we have two sections that have been presented to you. We have Section D, the Annual Budget Plan, that includes the projected special education budget funding, projected revenues and expenditures as allowed by IDEA. And we have Section E, which is the Annual Service Plan, that identifies the full continuum of service options provided within the SELPA. Both sections have been posted. Section D, the Annual Budget, and Section E, Service. I do need to verbally update and make a correction for Section D. When you're looking at Table 2, our total expenditures are now $118,103,685.73. Those are total expenses. Then on Table 3, which is our total revenue, the correction is now $118,106,189.73. And that is the updated correction for Sections D, Total Expenditure and Total Revenue.
All right. Dr. Menores, is there anything else?
No more. Just to recognize that there is that slight difference in the expenditure and the revenue than that then was what was posted in the public, for the public hearing, and so we need that captured in our minutes, as well as that's what the board is approving tonight.
All right, board, I will now call for the vote.
Well, do we?
We're voting on this, my understanding that we're voting on this, correct?
Correct. There's a.
Madam President.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion.
Yes.
I move, do you want to do it, Mr. Gallo?
No, that's okay. I'll second, I'll second you.
All right. I move to approve. Annual Budget for us.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any discussion?
Well, I thought this, that do we not open a public hearing? That's what I thought I saw on the agenda, but.
I did. I opened it. You just couldn't hear me bang over here.
No, but did we ask for any comments or this or that? I mean, we just opened and closed it, or what do we, what do we do?
There were no, there were no public comments for the hearing.
Okay. So do we close the public hearing and then vote and stuff? I mean, I always thought the procedure was a public hearing, then you close the public hearing, and then we take, make a motion and vote, so.
Well, it's my understanding we're going to, 2 and 3 doesn't require a vote, correct? But 4 and 5 does, and they're all under public hearing. So you want to go through them all? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Gallo?
No, I'm just, I, I thought we were on, you know, 4.1 and.
We are, but I heard that there's, all of them are not requiring a vote. But I can go through all of them. 4.1 is, 2 and 3 is not under this public hearing, and then 4 and 5 is going to require a vote. Correct, Karen?
I think, I think the procedure, the part that Mike is talking about, we're past it. Normally, when you do a public hearing, it'll be announced, this is to open the public hearing, and then Ms. Gutierrez would have did her presentation. There's comments from the public. If not, you will close the public hearing, and then we will entertain a motion.
Okay, so I, I did open them, I did open the hearing. I don't think you probably heard me, but I did open it and bang with my, over here.
Yes, I heard that.
So I will, I will move forward with 4.2. We'll go through all of them and then close, correct?
President Rogers, no, I think what he's wanting you to do is close each item. Close this one, then open the public hearing for the next one and so on.
Yeah, that's, that's what we should do, and then if there's required action, you take it after you close the public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on 4.1. Okay? And then 4.2. We're voting.
No, take the vote.
Don't we have a vote now? We can redo our motion. Yeah, we, I'll second that again.
All right, I, I move to approve the Annual Service Plan and Budget.
Thank you.
For 2021 Special.
I'll second again.
Okay, we've been moved and second. Now we'll call for the vote for 4.1, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go back. Mr. Tillman.
I.
Dr. Hill. You're on you. Dr. Flores.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Dr. Wyatt.
I.
Gwen Rogers. Motion carry. All right, we will open on 4.2, open our public hearing, and that's balances in excess of minimum reserve requirement fiscal year 2019-20.
President Rogers, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. All right, there are no comments, board.
I got a quick, so what is the? Is this the actual budget we're doing?
No. No, Mr. Tillman, the budget, the budget is actually 4.3. Janie, could you give an explanation of 4.2?
Yes, so if you'll recall several years ago, the new, under ed code, if a district has any funds beyond their minimum required, you have to have a special public hearing on it. And so this shows that there, we project we'll have 15 million above the minimum reserve when we end this year out. So it's required under ed code.
And do you have to adjust after the unaudited actuals?
No, I don't. We've, we never adjust, but all of that is then no approved by the board when we bring the unaudited forward, but I can find out. I don't, I don't recall us doing that.
And since it's on here, I ask the question now, because I'm confused about this projected remaining unassigned balance to a certain degree need. I don't know what that means.
So in our budget presentation, you'll show that we have it set aside for for our future deficit. So when we reserve certain amounts, this is the language required under ed code, Section 42127, is that you show how much is the 2%, and then what is beyond that 2%, and it's just the wording that's required. And then we'll show it to you in the multi-year as provided for future deficit spending or PDS.
This is Dr. Flores. I want to ask. What, are you done?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think Mr. Tillman is done. Don't forget to put the comments in.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish, Chris Stalkis.
Yeah, so it's just required under ed code. This is the format of the wording that we have to use. When we get to the multi-year, you'll see, you know, when we reserve amounts in excess of the 2%, we always say what it's reserved for. And we don't use this term. We use it for, well, you see where she has it, for deficit spending and board priorities. And those could include the physically distant schooling as we move into this next year. We have it helping us get through the next year with our budget.
And, and and this would have been here, whether it's the, the budget you thought about that we think we're going to have as of today versus the, the one that was, had all the $97 million in cuts?
So the reason, yes, Mr. Tillman, that's a great question. So the reason we have that, remember, we closed school early, and so we had some additional savings. And so because of the early closure, it's higher than we, a little bit higher than we anticipated.
Which leads to my next question. All, all that money from COVID-19, does it get booked into this year's budget or next year's?
All the, the one-time dollars that we're getting, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, is, is it going to be in, in the?
Next year, yeah, next year.
So none of us going to be booked in 1920 school year budget?
No, we, it's not until next year when we get the money, and so we're booking it next year, and that will be in the presentation as well.
So we haven't received any, any money for COVID-19 in this year's budget?
That's my understanding is all as of July.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I, I do, Madam President.
Okay, Dr. Flores.
So just to clarify, if we want to ask a question, we have to put it in the chat?
Yes.
Okay, and that includes Mr. Tillman?
Yes, he, yes, you're absolutely right. He started talking when nothing was in there, so.
Mr. Tillman?
I thought I was the only one that had a question.
Anyway, so our actual 2%, just to clarify, Janie, is 14,900,000, correct?
For this year, so it's based on your expenditures, yeah.
So we had 15, so we had 15 million, so that's an overage, right?
I am looking now for the item. Sorry, I got going to a different window. Yes, for this year, yes. So the, the 2% is 14.9, and the 15 million above that 2%. Yes.
So it's just a little bit over, right? Okay. And that will then go into the general fund, right?
Yeah, it's our ending balance reserved for, as you know, just the, although we're getting one-time dollars next year, it's, we're still deficit spending because we're not receiving a COLA. Although our position, which we'll talk about in the presentation, is much better than we thought a couple of weeks ago.
You know, now that you mentioned that, I thought that I read somewhere, I couldn't go back and find it, that they were not going to take out the COLA, that we were going to get the COLA. I'm going to look for that.
Yeah, that was the version, but the version that we've received information on, that the governor and the legislature agreed upon, does not include a COLA, is the information we have now.
Oh, really? Okay, is that from, is that from, who's that from?
Well, we got stuff from School Services, we got stuff from Kevin Gordon from Casbo, there's trade their bill language.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to go back and find where I found, where they sent me that. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And Mr. Tillman, is that a new question?
It is a new question.
Okay.
Mr. Stalkis, so you don't have to put in the restricted general, I mean, the restricted any fund balance?
No, but that's in our multi-year.
And.
And so it's, it's unrestricted, yes.
Right, so, and you guys are still saying that you think the any balance total is going to be $40 million?
So let me go back to the screen. Sorry, I keep toggling out. It was 30. It's 30.2 million that we think for this year.
Unrestricted, so when you add in, I'm just trying to get ideas. So you're saying when you add in the restricted general fund any balance, it's going to, at one of the other meetings, you said a lot of this was based on the any fund balance total of $40 million?
Yeah, it, we're projecting 44 million. That will be on the presentation on the next item.
All right.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so we will close this item 4.2. We will close this public hearing. And we will move to 4.3. Fiscal, we will now open up the public hearing on 4.3 fiscal year 2020 and 2021 preliminary budget.
President Rogers, we do have a brief presentation for the board. Would you like us to do that before or after public comment?
We could take the public comments if there are some.
I think we do have some, Karen.
We have three, okay. Okay, the first one is from no name. Point blank, will there be layoffs, pink slips, or bumpy for classified staff? I understand the uncertainty of the COVID, but we as loyal employees are standing in limbo, waiting to hear if our jobs are safe or on the chopping block, since so many cuts will become reality. The next one is from Sarah Hernandez. In discussing, discussing the budget and any possible cuts, I would like to encourage the board to continue funding the arts. My children are enrolled in band and choir classes. To them, these are the classes they enjoy most and what they care the most about. These classes are what motivate them to try hard in school, and without them, I believe they would lose interest in school altogether. And my last one is from no name. I would like to request that the arts, especially band and choir, not be cut. This seems to be a theme when making cuts, that the arts always get cut. There are many, many students who thrive in the arts, and there are incredible teachers who don't deserve to lose their jobs. I also want to recommend no cuts of employees classified or certified, certificated. There should be pay decreases across the board. If everyone takes an equal hit, no one should have to lose their jobs. If everyone, including the higher up positions, take a 20% cut, et cetera, then no one should have to lose their jobs. And that's it for those comments.
Thank you. Dr. Volkmer? Did Dr. Volkmer go away?
He disappeared.
He just disappeared off the screen.
I'm sorry, I was just told that you didn't quite hear my last comment.
Okay, you want to read it again?
Um.
We heard it.
Okay, let me find where Dr. Volkmer went. There he is.
Yeah.
I heard, I heard it.
I was letting Karen know that she came off for a little bit.
Got it. Karen, go ahead, just for clarity, so we can make sure.
Okay, I'm going to read the last one totally again, because I'm not sure where I got lost. She would like to request the arts, especially band and choir, not be cut. This seems to be a theme when making cuts. The arts are always cut. There are many, many students who thrive in the arts, and there are incredible teachers who don't deserve to lose their jobs. I also want to recommend no cuts of employees classified or certificated. There should be pay decreases across the board. If everyone takes an equal hit, no one should have to lose their jobs. If everyone, including the higher up positions, take a 20% pay cut, et cetera, then no one should have to lose their jobs. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Volkmer, you are back. You've reappeared.
I had, I had a statement, Madam President.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, just a quick response, that's not the norm in our district. We, our theme is not to cut music and arts. That's why we have a robust music and arts program. Because over the years, even through budget cuts, we make sure that we maintain our music and arts program in San Ranodino City Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for that, and it's important for our community to know, we are definitely here for our students, so that's great. I see you, the presentation is going to pop up.
Yes, Janie, while you're pulling that up, board, we are pleased to bring you very good news this evening. We're going to have to do some budget shuffling and cash flow shuffling due to deferrals, but cuts are not in our immediate future. We're very happy to, to say that. I want to thank, before she starts, I want to thank Janie and her team for being prepared for anything. This is, this is again, good news. At one time, it was pretty bad news, and her team has worked very, very, very hard for us to be able to be prepared for anything. So I want to thank her for that, and turn it over to her for the presentation. Thanks, Janie.
Good evening, board. It's so great to bring, as Dr. Volkmer said, some better news, right? Some good news. We were looking at some severe, severe cuts to public education, and it's coming in the form of deferrals. Certainly, it's it could be better, but considering the circumstances we're in with COVID and everything, we're so grateful that we will be at flat funding, so very thankful for that. So next slide, Daniel. So tonight, you know what, this is our public hearing, wanted to give you an update, talk a little bit about the state budget agreement, what we know to date, you know, information continues to come out, but we're learning a little more every minute of the day. The impact to our district, our preliminary multi-year projections, and the next steps. So these projections, now Janet, Ms. King, who's worked really, really hard, her and her team, they're wrapping everything up so that you can approve the budget on the June 30th. We know there may be revisions. The state has talked about that in August, and if anything major changes from what we're presenting to you this evening, we will bring those 45-day revisions to you in August as well. Next slide. I see there's a question.
Um, do, I'm not sure how many slides you have. Okay, I'll go ahead and pause because you seen that, but I am monitoring it. Mr. Gallo, would you like to go ahead?
Well, I, I said it. I'll do, I'll wait till after the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. So we have chances, you know, we have a state budget right now. Again, some of the information is forthcoming, but we also will know more in August. Remember, our income taxes aren't going to be filed till July, so there's continue to be some bu- budget uncertainty as COVID has, you know, really wreaked havoc on our economy. And, you know, revenue volatility at the state level, which impacts us, and then we will have pretty significant cash deferrals, which we prefer over cuts, but they, they are a challenge that we face. Implementing physically distant schooling, increased costs related to COVID. Dr. Menores gave an extensive presentation last weekend. There, there are increased costs related to that. And of course, importantly, the need to mitigate learning loss. Next slide, please. So this is what we know as of today, that there's large deferrals, so there are more than what the governor proposed, about 9.19 billion next year. We have a small deferral at the end of this year of about 1.9 billion. Great news that the proposal holds us harmless for our 1920 ADA, so that is great news. There's no flexibility with the instructional time, but you can use a combination of distance learning to meet the 180 days. A combination of distance learning and in-person. The language in the budget bill of 2021 eliminates the authority to lay off certificated employees by August 15th and prohibits termination of positions in nutrition, transportation, or custodial services. So if you receive less than a 2% COLA, there's language in ed code that permits a district to move forward with layoff, certificated layoffs, and that authority has been removed in the trailer bill language. Next slide. So if you'll recall, last week, we had not quite as many deferral moneybags, right? So Mr. Cunningham and his team put together the, you know, this is hot off the press, right? What does this mean to us? And you can see the small deferral in 1920, where we won't receive 50 million until July, and then look at all the deferrals as we move into the following year. So 49.7 million from June of '21 to July, 49.7 million from May to August, 49.7 million from April to September, 49.7 million from March to October, and 24.8 million from February to November. So here's the, the good news is if we receive more federal dollars, then it's a trigger off, which means there won't be as many deferrals, and so we'll see what happens. Of course, when the state doesn't pay districts, the cost of borrowing money is on the district. And so hopefully, we get federal dollars so that these deferrals are reduced. Next slide. So part of our multi-year projection, as you know, you've seen this slide many, many times. We recognize savings from our early school closure. We've limited and reviewed all of our contracts. We continue to evaluate vacancies, and these are things we're going to continue to do through the next year, waiting for our student enrollment to actualize before adding staff, you know, sticking to our staffing ratios. And then Dr. Perez will be leading a budget committee to recommend ongoing reductions as we go into the next fiscal year. So we will have, she showed the board, presented to the board last week, that we will have the board's subcommittee, the budget subcommittee, and we will have budget presentations for the board as we move into first interim, where we will have to identify cuts for the following year. Because we're receiving a lot of one-time dollars this upcoming year, that's really helping us with our budget. Um, because we're receiving a lot of one-time dollars this upcoming year, that's really helping us with our budget. Next slide. So here's some of our major assumptions, the flat funding with no COLA and no deficit, thank goodness. We do, um, we've included fifty-five point four million in one-time funding. We're expecting that we're declining enrollment of two hundred and forty-four students. Now, we will get the prior year, but when we move into twenty-one, twenty-two, that's when that impacts us, and we'll keep you updated on our enrollment as we move into the year. And the, the great news that we're being held har- harmless for the nineteen twenty level. We included nineteen point seven million in reductions that, that the team has worked on. Um, oh, about half of that, a little more than half of it, was things that were funded with carryover. And then, um, we will be prepared for state budget changes in August and throughout the budget year. Next slide, please. These were the, this was the budget that, um, we presented last week, showing how we're going to spend the one-time funding. Um, we have the CARES Act, the coronavirus relief, the GEAR, which is special education funding, for a total of fifty-five point four billion, uh, million, I wish it was billion, million, and, um, how we will be using the various funding sources to, um, replenish and refresh our devices, our physically distant schooling, um, and other academic support, and then to help with the budget deficit. Next slide.
Okay, so just so I'm clear?
Comment, Mr. Tillman, um, Mr. Gallo is prior. So Janie, did, I don't, I can't see this, um, slide on how many more slides you have yet left?
About, I think, three or four.
Okay, I'll stop right here. I'll pause right here. Mr. Gallo? And then I'll go in the order of the questions. Mr. Gallo, you're on mute? You're on mute, Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, if I hear something from Janie, I'd like to see the rest of it, um, but, uh, let me flip through the charts and see if I see it. Yeah, I guess I really don't, but I got a couple of questions. Um, one is on, uh, what are we doing about charters? Uh, we got what, fifty-five hundred students in charter schools? Um, uh, you're gonna tell them to take a nine-month, uh, hiatus from, uh, receiving any payments, uh, what's the game plan for that? That could put a lot of business.
Yes, so we don't, this is the state, um, Mr. Gallo, that's doing this, not the district. So they'll get their property taxes, which isn't enough, right? So they have, um, we reached out to, um, Kevin Gordon, we've reached out to the County Office of Education, and they have a couple of options that they can borrow, um, on their own. But what we were interested in is how can they borrow as a pool so that they can get low rates? And so they are actually, it looks like they're working on it at the state level. Um, the state treasurer is looking to see how they can put a pool together and working through the county offices for that. And so we will continue to monitor this, um, and, um, and, and see what they're doing, what they're providing for charter schools. This is a big impact for all LEAs, particularly if you have a low, um, property tax revenue, which, which that's us, so any charter school in San Bernardino would be the same. So, um, we will keep you posted on this. Um, as you can see, those large deferrals begin to happen as we get into next year, mid to late next year, and if we get the federal dollars, those deferrals will be cut in half. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, let's see, mid to next year, um, let's see, it looked like, uh, payments in February, right?
Start, yes, start.
I mean, those are, those are nine months, uh, uh, being deferred, right? That's what I read on this chart.
It's February, March, April, May, and June getting deferred, and like you said, yes, some don't get paid until later the next year. So we're gonna learn more, uh, Mr. Gallo, as this was just released, and if the federal funding comes through, the deferrals will be cut in half.
Okay, but let me just, let me, I'll make sure I understand what you just said. You said, uh, February through June are deferred, uh, but that's deferred to September. Is that what I understand? Or are they, are they, did he start up in July, August, September, October, November?
So, um, Mr. Gallo, you'll see that in, at the top of the chart, where June gets paid in July.
Yeah.
And then the next one, May gets paid in August, and then April gets paid in September, and March gets paid in October, and February and November. It is challenging, and so.
February is November, not to June. That's the following nine months.
Yeah, that's a smaller deferral. I hear what you're saying, this is hot off the press, right? So we've reached out to our app, um, to Kevin Gordon and other groups to see what will be available for those charter schools. And, um, we have a little bit of time right now, because it starts up in February, uh, around what charter schools will be able to do, so we can continue to, um, inquire and provide information to you.
Okay, um, then the other question I had was on the hundred and eighty days, uh, you're not allowed, you're not getting any relief on that. How, how, what is the game plan for, um, how you're going to ensure students receive the full one hundred and eighty days of, uh, instruction? As I mean, I, I look at what, you know, we say, we got an eighty-something percent participation rate, uh, but we're measuring that once a week, so somebody comes in for an hour once a week, and you get a, you count as a, as participation. Um, that's not gonna cut it in this, uh, hundred and eighty days, uh, compliance requirement. How, how, how in the world are we gonna meet that?
So I'm gonna to answer that question, um, Mr. Gallo, I know there's a team working on that, and we don't have a lot of information from the state yet. Dr. Volkermer?
Oh, yeah. So, uh, Mr. Gallo, two, two separate things. The, the hundred and eighty days is the minimum number that you have to offer as a school district, and that you'll get paid for from an ADA standpoint. So we couldn't say, well, to save money, if we, let's say, uh, the May revise had held, to save money, we only want to offer a hundred and sixty-five days. You can't do that by law.
I, I get it.
There's a difference between having to offer a hundred and eighty days and the quality of what gets offered within that hundred and eighty days. And that's what I hear you really asking about in terms of making sure that kids get a robust educational, uh, experience.
Uh, yeah, and the quality is one thing. I, I hear you, and there's varying degrees of that, of course, with the distance learning thing. But, uh, but how are you going to ensure participation for a full days, for a full hundred and eighty days by a student?
Correct, and that, and that, and that is part of what we're working on for our opening. In, in August, you heard a, um, a fairly comprehensive report about that last week. Um, we will be bringing you more information as we solidify negotiations, as we move forward with what our program will actually look like, balancing that against, uh, you know, what we're allowed to do, depending upon whether the, whether COVID spikes again or not, what program model we can actually use. So we'll be bringing you much more information about that. It is absolutely on our mind. Uh, if you heard, um, Dr. Menares' presentation last week about soft opening, that, that's absolutely on our mind for those students who kind of checked out on us, and we didn't have, uh, engagement or, or contact with them. How do we bring them back up to speed? Very much on our minds. It's a great question.
Yeah, we, we're gonna talk about that later tonight, right? Are we?
Not, not programmatically, just start date.
Um, okay, start date, yeah, and, um, maybe we can have a discussion around what that start date means, because I think there's a lot of options, um, for this, and probably multiple flexibility options that, um, we, we may want to be thinking about, which I'm sure we are. Um, so, okay, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait till that discussion arises before we get into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Harold.
Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, on the, uh, the line of questioning that Mr. Gallo had, so in this, in this year that we just left, they relaxed the standards for defining ADA, right?
That's correct. They held us harmless.
Right, and they're not gonna do that this upcoming school year?
Yes, they are, Mr. Tillman. So this year, the P two went through the end of February instead of March, because of when we went, um, because of the school closures. And what they're saying is, we're gonna hold you at the nineteen twenty level
Right.
for twenty twenty-one.
And that's the question Mr. Gallo was asking. So, Mr. Gallo, it, it doesn't matter, uh, how we structure attendance or who shows up, you're gonna get all your funding.
No, I get the funding piece. I'm just looking, I, I mean, we still gonna have a requirement. I thought I heard Janie say that the requirement is still that students will be required to participate for a hundred and eighty days, and I'm assuming those are full days. It's separate from the budget. I'm talking about instruction, which is the whole point of what we're doing here. Is, is, uh, how are these, are our students getting an education?
Right.
Of education. Yeah, so I get the funding, I get the funding, and that's great. Uh, that's, that's good. Uh, that just gives us the resources to be able to, uh, offer, uh, you know, those types of, uh, services. But I'm more concerned with, uh, ensuring our students actually receive a hundred and eighty days of full instruction.
That's, okay, uh, and then to Ms. Christakis, you know, I, I, I'm really, I get confused about the concern about borrowing the money. Uh, because when I worked in the treasurer's office, we were excited about doing trans. Uh, we, the cost for trans was so cheap that we could reinvest the money and make money on it. So, I, I, you keep talking about the cost of borrowing, but how much, how much is it gonna cost us to borrow?
So we don't have that yet, Mr. Tillman, um, but, um, so we will bring that information to you. It's also, when you look at how large those deferrals can be, is, and you have to pay, when you have to pay the trans back and all of that, and because our district, um, is dependent, highly dependent on state aid, a lot of our money comes from state aid, and so the deferrals impact us more, just as Mr. Gallo was talking about our charter schools. And so, we'll, we'll be pulling with other districts, and we'll be, uh, sharing that cost.
But it'd be nice if we knew what a real cost is, because you scare me talking about borrowing. But if it turns out it costs us nothing to borrow, why do we keep talking about it like it's the end of the world? That's the impression I get. And now, maybe it is, maybe it's gonna cost us, you know, sixty million dollars to borrow money. In the past, I, I don't remember it costing like that, uh, but maybe I'm missing something on it. I don't know.
So I'll, we'll, we'll have, again, this is hot off the press with the total amount, so we'll get those costs to you.
And when we, and when we do the trans, is it as simple as saying, we're gonna borrow the total amount that we need and put it in our bank account at the county, uh, treasurer?
You know, I don't have that with me. I did a B C a couple of weeks ago on that, so I'll bring that back, uh, Mr. Tillman.
And, and, and why, and the reason why that's important, because, uh, the way we used to do it, the, we should borrow the money on the trans, and it almost cost us nothing. You could take that money and put it into a ten-year treasury note, and you would get a yield that was higher than what you were paying for the money. So you were actually making money on the borrowing the money. So it'd be, I mean, it's important to know, and that's the case, because then there is no cost associated with borrowing the money. And this is a, a great thing, and, 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 and perception is everything. I, I think we make a mistake if we act like there's something bad about this scenario. If it turns out it doesn't cost anything, and we're just gonna get reimbursed late. But the sooner we know what the actual costs are, or what the concerns are about borrowing it, because I don't think that, that we're, we'll get denied, but getting the trans, right? We, we know for sure we'll get a trans, right?
I am assuming we will, and I will, I will bring an update to the board.
Right, and then you're gonna look at, you'll look at some of the, I'm sure we're gonna look at some of the, uh, funds that we have for, uh, construction, that type of thing.
Interfund borrowing, yes.
And determine whether or not that money's gonna be used now. If it's not, you can borrow from that, which would reduce the amount of money you'd have to borrow, right?
Yeah, we'll be using that for sure on this June deferral that's occurring this month, um, is the interfund. But when you look at the amounts that have to be transferred, we will have to borrow. So we'll, we'll be doing both.
And, and I just want to say, I think because, uh, you all have talked about it so much, that you have to come back to us and tell us, how much it's gonna really cost to borrow the money, and you, you're not gonna go to the county treasurer?
I, I, we did last time, so I'm thinking we will. So what we'll note, uh, Mr. Tillman, is if we get federal dollars in the fall, and if we do, we don't have to borrow this whole amount, because it's a trigger off. It'll be half of the amount. So Mr. Cunningham will be working on those scenarios, and I'll, I'll bring it back to the board.
And if you can find out, uh, if this, if it's still the same thing, if, if the, the, to borrow the money is so cheap, that you'll actually make money on the investment, because I'm sure they still do the interest apportionment on our part of the money, then it'd be good to know that. That way, we can come back and tell everybody, even though we had to do the deferment, because the, we didn't have to pay anything, it, it, it ended up being benign, because that, that is a possibility, I think. That's what used to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Dr. Flores?
Yeah, that, I'm gonna follow up with a question that Danny was asking. Those are the, some of the same questions that I was going to ask. Could you go to slide five, please, Janie? Uh, I'll, I'll first start with what, I'll follow up with what Mr. Tillman was saying. It's really important that we, as the board, know exactly the amount of money that we have to borrow, and also the exact amount that we have in, not reserve, but that we can borrow from ourselves, because, uh, in our, in our facilities and construction, um, budget, do you know offhand how much we have there?
Um, Dr. Flores, these are the projected amounts we will have to borrow if we don't get federal funding. This is our dollars.
Right here, where I'm seeing?
Yes.
Okay.
You requested that it be what it means to us. This is what it means to us. It's.
Well, my question is, so the first one is ninety, is forty-nine point seven, correct?
For next year, yeah. This year's the first one, fifty million from June of this year to July, on the far left.
On the far left. Oh, over here, okay.
Yeah, so fifty million will be deferred from June, and we'll get it in July, so we can handle that.
Okay, so where are we taking that money from, from our, where are we borrowing that from?
We'll borrow it from our own funds.
From our own funds, and we need to approve that as a board?
Yeah.
Any, any transfer of money, we need to approve.
We, you do, uh, we do a, uh, an action item every year, and it already came to the board. Yes, and I, I will update, I will update the board correspondence that we did on the deferrals to include this worst-case scenario.
I don't recall that we approved borrowing fifty million.
We do it every year. Uh, we do every year that we can borrow and do interfund transfers.
Yeah, but did, you didn't put the amount. You just put inter, interfund, uh.
That's correct, because if we ever need to do it to make payroll, we have the flexibility to get.
No, that's what I was asking, because I don't re- recall approving fifty million. It was just, uh, approval of interfund borrowing. Okay, fine, that's, that was, okay, got it. And then, as we go along for twenty twenty-one, then those the amount, those are the amounts that we have to defer, right? That you have on twenty-one, twenty-two.
We're not receiving from the state if we don't get federal dollars.
And those are the ones that we have to borrow, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I, that was the clarity that I needed. And, um, we should be getting an update. I've been reading, um, the newspaper all day and yesterday, and apparently, uh, the Senate is, is getting ready, uh, I don't know how soon, but to approve another, um, CARES Act, so hopefully we'll get that, we'll get the, the money. Okay, that, those are my clarification questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, you had another, um?
I, I did. Uh, Ms. Christakis, you mentioned that, um, because of some of the money being one-time money, we were gonna look at making cuts.
For, uh, so the one-time dollars, uh, the slide number eight, I believe. David, if you can move to eight. These are one-time dollars on this chart, uh, Mr. Tillman, that we're getting for twenty twenty-one. It's the following year, when you don't get the one. that we're getting for twenty twenty-one. It's the following year, when you don't get the one-time dollars where the budget. So we have a year to prepare, unless something goes wrong between now and then.
No, but the question I have is, this is one-time money for the CARES and coronavirus relief. What was the gear money?
That's for special ed.
And that was new money, right? But it is new money.
They all are.
Right. But I, I guess my only concern is, from year to year, we don't know how we're going to receive the money. And from year to year, we get one-time money. So often, I don't know why they keep calling it one-time money.
Well, they're all new, um, Mr. Tillman, in response to the coronavirus and helping districts, you know, um, prepare for the distance uh schooling.
Right.
And um, helping budget deficits.
I got that. I guess my only concern is, to me, you, you have to respond to the budget and the money that they're going to propose to give you. That's when we'll decide if we have to make cuts or not. I just get kind of apprehensive when you guys start positioning to make cuts, because, because they may not be realized, you may not need it. I have a real, and I, and I purposely push the envelope, because uh it's, it's, the situation we're in is a thousand times better than the one when we thought we got to cut ninety-seven million dollars.
Yes.
And, and I, and I said from the beginning, after we heard that the Senate had a different version, it wasn't going to happen. So I think a, as a board, we have to say, we didn't get the cuts. Because if you don't, you, you, the entire district will adopt the philosophy that we have all these cuts we got to make. You already hear the people saying they're worried about layoffs and cutting. The, the only cuts we made in, in classified are the routine cuts that we always make in terms of size society. They don't want this position versus that position, and the need for certain positions. It, 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 that always happens. But in, in terms of making across-the-board layoffs to save money, we're not doing that, right? So I, I think it's important that we say that, because the word should be right now. It's different, it's a difference in day and night from the previous proposal, where they were talking about ninety-seven million dollars in cuts, to having to do deferrals, and we have the money that we should be able to spend. If we don't, we'll end up with an ending balance of a hundred and fifty million dollars.
Mr. Tillman, thank you. I thought I said that at the beginning, so I apologize if I didn't come across as being very thankful for our that, that hand we're being dealt right now.
I'll sound happier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And um, we're going to let her um go ahead and finish through towards the end. We appreciate your comments, and then we'll pick it back up. So Janie, will you finish through?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Uh, next slide, uh, David.
Okay, so here is our preliminary multi-year projection. Um, let's look at, so the question always comes up, what will our ending balance be? So you can look at line nine, our reserve for, on the first column, reserve for restricted fund balances, about fourteen million. Reserve for economic uncertainties, fourteen point nine, and reserve for deficit spending is that fifteen million that you saw earlier in the, in the public hearing. So if you, Daniel, could you click once? So if you look at next year, you see the revenues go up, um, because we're getting fifty million, fifty-four million in one-time dollars. And then um expenditures uh increase, because we're going to be doing um physically distant schooling. We're going to replenish some of the devices. And then uh we have a projected deficit spending. We think our beginning balance will be forty-four point three million, and we'll end next year with thirty-three point eight. Fourteen million reserved for restricted, fifteen for economic uncertainties, and then we think we'll have four point one million um beyond that. That will get spent the following year. So if you can click one more time. On um line number three, as we know today, based on zero COLA and not getting additional CARES or GEAR or anything like that, we would have to make thirty-seven million in reductions in twenty-one, twenty-two, and sixty-four point five the following year. So in order to um have a balanced budget. So we have to be prepared, because COVID is um has been very devastating to the economy. And that's what the budget committees are doing, is looking at how can we streamline, what can we do through attrition, all the things that we can do so that we're prepared, should the um economy continue to be impacted and, and depending on how long it is before we recover. And that's, that's it for this slide. We know that a lot's going to happen between now and twenty-one, twenty-two. But as required by the County Office of Education, by first and second interim, if the budget remains as we know it today, we will have to identify what those reductions will be. And that's just part of what we're required to do. Next slide. And then again, um, just being prepared for what's ahead, there's a lot of things that occur year to year. Our costs go up each year, and with a zero percent COLA, it's, you, you can't keep up with the increased costs. So it's good to have higher reserves than the minimum. Next slide. And then here's our, our, our calendar. Next week, we'll present the same budget to you as an approval for the year. If anything major changes, we, we will do our forty-five-day budget revision, which will come to the board. Again, the governor and the legislature will have further deliberations in August. And then September, we'll have our un-audited actuals. And so that's probably um really all I need to point out at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Christakis, for your presentation. And again, to, just for the board, we know this has been a long journey, and I think in the leadership, we decided that we would meet and meet and meet as we look forward to what we thought could have happened. You know, from the temperature check that I'm getting from individuals, this is good news. And this is the reason why we're, we're live, we're going live to let everyone see, you know, where we are, where we could have been. We're grateful that we're not there. But here we are, no one's talking about cuts, no one's wanting to do cuts. No one wanted to see the ultimate happen, and we're, we're grateful for this. And as we carve through it, that's why we're meeting every week, so that we can get on track and ensure that our students can start school. We can get, go back to doing what we do. We're in the business of educating students, and we need the money to do it. And so we're happy to see that things are taking a little turn. But as we know, things will change a little bit here and there, and that's why we are listening and we're making sure we know where we are. And every day, something could change, but we are receiving some good news, and we do want to celebrate that and let our community know that that's why we're sitting here in this meeting, so you can see it as we see it in real time. I believe there's a couple of comments. Again, we have Mr. Tillman, followed by Dr. Flores, followed by Dr. Hill.
And um, Ms. Christakis, the, how much did we actually deficit spend uh in last year's budget?
It was over fifteen million. The reason that we projected higher this year, Mr. Tillman, is we had a very large uh textbook adoption. I think um it was close to twenty million, eighteen or nineteen million. And we also had expenditures from the Board of Ed, um, the, the construction that was from previous carryovers. And so those were some of the reasons we project a higher um deficit spending this year.
And, and are you looking at um the numbers right now? They're still telling you we're close to having a forty-six million dollar?
That's where, so we'll be paying bills and doing things. You know, we still have payroll um through August. And so that's how it looks at this point, and we'll continue to keep you updated on that.
And I, I, I'll tell you what, what my concern is, uh, you know, uh, and it, in, in the end, it works out, because we have a whole bunch of extra money left over. Uh, because I, I just can't imagine um our district deficit spending by forty-six million dollars, but and you're going to, and we won't know until September when we do the actuals. But when you look at the beginning fund balance for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I guarantee if you go back and look at the same budget page four years ago, when twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was the out year, it probably would have said projected any balance was fifteen million dollars. Because that's how conservative we are. Uh, and, and that's okay, but I, I think when there, the, when you tell the folks the money they can spend is there, and this is the message to the employees, you should spend the money. I, the, I, I just hope they don't get the, the impression that uh, because they should. If, if this, if, if I thought this paper was going to end up being this way, where we're going to have twenty-five million dollars in any balance in twenty-two, twenty-three, then I would be talking about making cuts right now. But historically, that doesn't happen. So I have to just believe that it, it won't go in that direction. But, but I, but I hope that other employees spend the money that they're allocated. And I don't know what their uh any fund balances look like, but I hope as a district, we make sure we spend the money on, on this year's kids. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Um, Ms. Christakis, uh, Christakis, thank you for preparing all of this and your team. Um, I just want to ask, what is the COLA cost uh for all of our employees?
So the COLA is, it's not for the employees, it's on the revenue that uh.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, I'm sure I understood that right. So uh what we were projecting was almost ten million, about nine point six million that we're not getting for.
That we're not getting. But it's still on the table, right? It's not yet. And right now, we don't have it, but aren't they negotiating?
I saw that there is no COLA, section four, two, two, three, eight point oh two one specifies that the COLA shall be zero for twenty twenty-one. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's a final?
Yeah, that's part of the K twelve Budget Act, uh, Senate, let's see, it's A B seventy-seven. And so, but I think because they were proposing a COLA, Dr. Flores, it's been quite, you know, up and down uh ride over the last several weeks. So the Senate was proposing a COLA, but what they, the agreement between the legislature and the governor um came out with no COLA. But no, no, no deficit either, so that was good.
Okay, so we lost about ten million.
Yeah.
With that, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I just needed a clarification. And I agree with Danny, uh, we always come up with more in our ending balance that people haven't spent, so I'm hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Christakis, thank you so much, and certainly uh let your team know they did a great job with this presentation. It has been wonderful. I've enjoyed following, and I think I pretty much understood everything. So again, I want to say thank you. But I just have a couple of questions. First, I want to make a comment. Uh, I was just so glad to hear that we aren't going to have the cuts, because that's always difficult. We already have a city with a number of economic problems, and so um, and I know many of our classified, and hopefully more of ours certificate it. And San Bernardino be a place that they would want to live, so that we can continue to uh uh build our database and do what we need to do for this city. Lots of potential, but we have to be here to do that. So I'm, I'm just glad to hear that there aren't going to be any cuts. Um, I, one of the questions I have, will we continue with the city having its financial, financial flows? Will it continue getting the uh redevelopment monies that we get yearly or annually?
Yes, we will. Most of those dollars go to pay our C O P payments, but we actually um referred to our R D A specialist, and he studied at the state level, and those dollars are still coming to us and will.
Great. And the other one, I know there was a delay with the deadline for state taxes, uh, as well as, uh, of course, federal taxes. So does this mean there's a possibility at what the amount we get will either go up or down? Hopefully, it will increase and not decrease?
Yeah, hopefully it will increase, but yes, you're correct. That's why um they, the governor and the legislature has said, be prepared for further, you know, changes in August, because of that, that big shift of when our taxes are due.
Okay, and my final question is, uh, and I didn't think of this until I heard Mr. Gallo mention charter schools. But I know we have a few charter schools, uh, that's not on our jurisdiction, but under the county. Do we have a, a, a partnership or relationship with those schools that their S L P either comes through us or um, are, are there any financial concerns that, that we are either giving them money or they're giving us funds?
So for, for the S L P, is that what you're, I'm sorry?
Not just the S L P, but I know there are two or three charter schools in San Bernardino City, and they, they have not been, I mean, they, they are good charter schools and they approved charter schools, but they're not schools that came before us.
Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. And so the question is, are they contributing to the special ed or?
Well, maybe I should reword my question. Are there any financial considerations um, uh, with those charter schools? Because I know with, with our charter schools, I believe they're, they pay for certain services to us.
Yes.
Do the charter schools from, that's not on our jurisdiction, uh, are there any financial uh payments that we get, or does it all go to the county?
So I will have to check. It's a great question. So if they, if they get, receive special education services from us, then they pay for them. If they pay for police services, they pay, they, then they pay us for that. Um, those are the two, and if uh there are facilities that they use, then there, there's a cost to that as well. So let me find out for you. I'll, I'll do a B C, Dr. Hill, and, and get that back to you.
Great. And if you could include food services with that as well.
Yeah, and food services as well. They do provide for some of our, our charter schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And again, thanks for doing a great job, and uh I, I have all the confidence in the world that we are going to do wonderful. The thing we just have to remember is if we just spend what we need to spend, I think we would be okay. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Um, likewise, how, uh, you know, thank you for the presentation. I was going to ask, when you're looking at funding, and this may be with another budget conversation we're going to have with programs and so forth. Um, one of the complaints I was getting is that the current programs that we're using, I believe, hold on, I need to get my glasses, that they were um like Wonders, which is for language arts and vision. Um, I didn't hear any complaints when it came to the middle and high school, but for elementary, those two were complicated. Is there any model or, or um looking at what homeschooling programs are using, other um distance learning programs that are using before, of course, we entered to the COVID, so many of them have programs that are very effective? Have we looked into other programs, or maybe a good question would ask, how are the staff and families and students feeling about the current programs that we have right now?
So I will have to defer that, um, Dr. Volker.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a shot of that. Uh, Ms. Rosales Medina, if you're talking about their experiences with distance, I think I heard you say distance learning?
Yes, with the programs, Wonders and Envision. So I know we're using that, and so the, the questions was asked was, uh, when it comes to budget, have our, has our district looked at using maybe other platforms, the programs pertaining to uh better ways to teach online?
We'll, we'll bring you, we'll bring you back um specific information about those programs. But I do know that we're in the middle of a survey with all of our teachers right now, asking them about their experiences in distance learning. I believe that comes to a conclusion July sixth, and so we'll have that data uh available, just in terms of how did it work? How can we get better, et cetera, et cetera? But we'll look into both of those programs for you.
Okay, yeah, just to make sure. And then even asking students, how effective was it? Um, are there other alternatives? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Gallo?
Um, yes, I, I had a kind of a follow-up to Margaret's question. Uh, Margaret, you were talking about um charters that were not chartered by us, but are existing in San Bernardino City Unified School District boundaries.
That's correct.
So, so I just, uh, I heard Janie, you characterized what you would get from Margaret. It's like looking at all charter schools and the financial, uh, whether we're providing any sub-financial assistance or uh getting paid from these things. So I think she was specifically uh requesting those charter schools that we did not uh approve, per se, or that aren't chartered through us, yet are resident in the, in our district boundaries. or that aren't chartered through us, yet are resident in the, in our district boundaries. Does that, is that what you understood?
Yes, I was just gonna give an update on everything, um, Mr. Gallo.
Okay, but the segregation of those, I think that's an important.
Yeah, I.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I think we covered all the questions. So I am going to four point three. Again, I'm closing this one because I don't show this one on here that we're voting. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm closing this public hearing on four point three, and I will open the public hearing on four point four. Memorandum of Understanding Four Ten Summer Compressed Work Schedule Between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the Classified School Employees Association and its Charter one eighty-three. Are there comments?
No public comments.
Okay. And Board, is there any comments?
Um, I, I have a comment. Um, you know, I, uh, the four tens, I mean, is.
Oh, wait, hold on, Mr. Gallo. I look back. Mr. Tillman is in the box.
Oh, okay, uh, yeah, sorry, Danny.
Over your chat, I put your name in there, Mike. You're supposed to write, I have a question.
Just for. Thank you for that instruction, Danny. I really appreciate it. I didn't think there were any other questions. Oh, wait a minute, somebody else, you, somebody else used that excuse.
But, but this is just for uh a, a formality of allowing classified, some classified employees to do four tens.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
And it lasts between what and what? I got it, June eighth through July twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now we have Mr. Oh, Mr. Gallo, do you have a question? I didn't see.
I, yeah, I, I was gonna type, but I, Danny kind of asked the same thing as to what it was. I, I, I mean, I know we've had some things where we've kind of closed down offices on Fridays, every other Fridays on things like this, and that. I, I know it's been a problem for uh for people, especially during the school year, and even as we're approaching um, you know, beginning of a school year, just when parents have so many questions, and it's really hard to get ahold of anybody uh uh to do this. So I, I think we ought to maintain at least some skeleton uh uh staff for that kind of, you know, to make sure that we're actually being available. Um, I, I don't know if that's been thought of, uh, to have some staff available, um, really throughout the year. So just my comment.
Mr. Gallo? This, this only occurs in the summer. The only time we're closed during the year would be for a recognized holiday. This is, the, this, this short appear, this short amount of time is only during the summer.
Okay, but I know some school sites and everything, Peter, I, I mean, I, if I hear it, I guarantee the rest of you are hearing it. You know, that, uh, that's just impossible to get any, any feedback, can't, I never get phone calls back and stuff, so I, I, I don't know if we've got a, a tiger team that actually, you know, is responsible for those kinds of uh uh calls. I, I, I still don't think we actually have a, a way to leave messages at school sites and stuff. I mean, I, I don't know if we got voicemail, uh, you know, have we ever done that? Yeah, I, I'm just, I mean, the schools I've called and stuff, it just rings and rings and nobody answers and it's uh it, it, and I know it's frustrating for, for some parents, so.
There should be a voicemail um option at all schools. Um, that is monitored by school personnel. Uh, obviously, we have limited personnel at the schools um because of physical distancing and stay-at-home orders. Um, we're again starting to repopulate district offices, working toward repopulating district offices. That should solve itself, but the voicemail um system has been in place.
Okay.
And I, and I've called the voicemail system, and I, I haven't received a call back. So I mean, we want to relook at that. I was just testing it out.
Me too.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for Mr. Tillman's comment, and then I see you, Dr. Flores, thank you for that, and I'm gonna be at resolve, and then we'll need a second. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Medina, you gotta put your thing in the chat. But um, to Mike's point, the, the issue is this. I think when we did four ten, we did it with also the thought of saving money on closing buildings, right, Dr. Volker?
Yes.
And I think that's the part that needs to change. I think, because you could do four ten and have coverage, because you could have some staff off on a Monday, and other half out on a, on a Friday, so people would be at the site. So, and, and I agree with uh Mr. Gallo, because I've heard the same complaint. I, I really think it's better to have the offices open, and you could still allow the staff to do four tens, just have the staggered coverage. But I think it'd be a huge benefit, especially now, because we've been off for so long. And there's so many questions out there on pa- from parents in the community about where we're going to proceed. So I think you're better off having that, that uh extra day open every week. I, I, I don't think it's a good idea to be closed uh every Friday. They can still do four tens, just do four tens with coverage. I think it makes a big difference, and we just eat the cost for uh keeping the buildings open, because the, because the uh we're not going to deficit spend by forty-six million dollars, so I'll give you a billion dollars to keep buildings open.
Okay, I don't see any more comments, so we're gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Be resolved that the Board of Education adopts the Memorandum of Understanding M O U four ten Summer Compressed Work Schedule between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the California School Employees Association and its Charter and its chapter number one twenty-three C S E A, and I see Dr. Flores has made a motion.
Yes, I move to adopt uh C S A, C S E A, M O U of four ten.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and I am going to call for the vote. There is no further discussion. All right, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. I am now closing, the, I'm now going to open the next four point five. Is, and I'm, I'm hitting my, I'm actually hitting something, Mike, four point five, District Contract Proposal Reopener to California School Employees Association, Chapter one twenty, one eighty-three. Are there any comments on that one?
There were no public comments.
All right, no public comments. Board? Any discussion, any information needed? I don't see anything. Okay, well, we're voting on this one.
We're gonna close the meeting first, right?
I, I.
The hearing.
Let me close the, there's no discussion. I'm closing the hearing, and now we will.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second, and I'm going to call for the vote if there's no further discussion. All right, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye, aye.
Dr. Wyatt? Dr. Wyatt, you're on mute. Okay, he's.
Aye, aye, sorry.
Thank you.
I try to keep it off so I don't make any comments.
Absolutely, thank you. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
All right, and Ms. Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now moving forward to public comments. Five point one, I believe we do have public comments. Okay, Karen, you are up.
Okay, um, we have like twelve comments. They're all basically related to item six point two with the school calendar on reopening of sites.
Okay, and before you do that, Karen, let me say this. This is the time that members of the public are provided an opportunity to directly address items placed on the school board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes or less and will be read by a facilitator. Individuals with comments on any other subject matter within the board's jurid- jurisdiction may address those during the regular meeting of the Board of Education on July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Any comments that are received through the pub- public comment forum not related to items on the special meeting agenda will be read at the next regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. The first one is from Ashley Bida Sakala, the president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Um, she says, S B T A has participated in the district's calendar advisory committee as well as surveying our members regarding the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Based on our survey results and the recommendation of the district to begin the year in virtual setting with students due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, our members overwhelmingly support starting on August third as previously approved by you. At this time, we urge the board to follow the recommendation of the district calendar advisory committee and our members and reaffirm our start date as August third, twenty twenty. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next one is from Brianna G. Regarding the school hours, um, once opened for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year, I think our children should be allowed a Monday, Wednesday, Friday school week with at least five hours, such as seven thirty A M to twelve thirty P M, with a Tuesday, Thursday distance learning schedule to allow the school to have a full twenty-four hours without student body for proper sanitation and cleaning. Two days a week at four hours a day does not seem plausible for working families. And if after-school programs will still be in place, then the hours they're allowed on school grounds to actually learn seem irrelevant. I understand the severity of what is happening in the world now and want the best for all students, but they need to learn in an actual school environment, not just with packets that are sent home weekly. Next one is from Sadie Espinoza. And she simply says, full distance learning or all in school? Next one's from anonymous. On June eighteenth, certified staff were sent out a survey on distance learning feedback. As of now, classified staff hasn't seen any type of survey, and yet time is ticking, and our return to work date approaches. Decisions have to be made on whether we are returning to site or working from home. It would be nice to be included, to know what is going on. Right now, it doesn't seem like you guys meeting only once a week is working. Yes, as of now, school starts August third, but ten and eleven-month employees return sooner to get things in order, ready, and prepared. We need to know how we are starting, where we are starting, and what do we need to prepare? The school year doesn't just start. Your classified employees are there getting ready to make sure it starts smooth. We need answers now. Next one is from Mart- Martine McJimson. The reopening of the S B C U S D should be delayed due to the observed, observed increase in cases of COVID nineteen with the known cause of the spread be, being gatherings with those who are of different households being a cause, along with those who are asymptomatic. To protect the youth and educators, please revisit the plan on continuing education from a distance with its daily virtual teachings in a black forum. Although you are providing options, it still places a risk to the community with those seeking the face-to-face option because of the possibility of spread from being out in other social events. Next one is from anonymous. I would like to say that I know for myself, safety is the number one concern. I have underlying health issues, but I also feel like we must continue to move forward in educating our students. We have board members to hear our concerns, give their input, and guide us in the direction moving forward. With that being said, I agree with Dr. Flores's insecurities, but I also feel that she is on one side of the spectrum and not taking into account everyone. It felt as if she rejected any chance of hearing a vote before the meeting began. Just my opinion, the district should start school on the scheduled date already agreed upon and give parents two options. One, virtual learning until the student and parent feel ready to return. Two, physical, full day in-school learning and getting the sport that and, and getting the support they need Tuesday through Friday with Monday virtual learning for all with no staff on campus. If students go with the half-day schedule and or two out of four days, it is not consistent enough to support meaningful learning. It's like college. You go to school two days a week for certain classes and pull an all-nighter the day before you return to school. You complete work to get by, not to retain or understand. If you do end up doing that, it would be best to have students go two days in a row instead of breaking it up. Plus, with half-days, if parents need help watching their kids because of work or transportation, then they can choose to attend CAPS, which means they are still physically on campus and not learning in a classroom environment because CAPS is more a social setting versus an academic one, which is why it is best offered after-school hours. So this means the kids who are in CAPS are not virtually engaged with their teacher like the other half that is at home. This doesn't make sense. The biggest reason I am offering my comment is so that parents, staff, and students can create a plan for their life that fits into the school plan, so a parent who is unemployed can look for a job that allows for certain days or times off, so that a parent who pays for daycare can consult and see what the difference is, and if transportation is included with half-days or split days. So students can now have a set schedule and not have the anxiety of not knowing what their year is going to look like, because a decision still hasn't been made. So that staff can arrange for their own children in home life to work with or around a school schedule and what that looks like for parents who have, have to physically work while their child is learning online and may or may not need their support. Thank you for your time. Next one is from Debbie Venditti. My concern with going back is the fact that there is no feasible way to keep us safe. When we shut down in March, when we shut down in March, there had only been one hundred deaths. Now we have over a hundred and twenty thousand, and the numbers continue to rise daily. Today, California hit a record high of six thousand new cases, almost doubled from yesterday. I read in the news yesterday that one school in South Africa, eight teachers tested positive and got sick. They closed the school last Thursday and reopened it Monday. I know this is not near us, but there can be a lesson learned from it. It's the teachers, parents, and grandparents of the kids who are at most risk of getting sick and possibly dying. I just can't even wrap my head around the fact that you would even reconsider opening, wait, even consider reopening in a matter of weeks with the numbers skyrocketing again, knowing full well you can't guarantee our safety even a little bit. I want to know how many teachers and staff you are willing to lose to this virus to make opening up again worth it. To me, one is too many. One last point that I would like to make is this. Starting with our special education population, who are some of the most fragile kids we have, is just absurd to me. My school has four classes of moderate-severe students, some of whom are already on ventilators. We even have a general ed student on a ventilator. Many of the students in this population are constantly sick. They come to school with oral secretions running down their faces constantly, with teachers and aides responsible for caring for that. Bathroom issues and accidents daily, including diarrhea, which they are supposed to go home for, but getting them picked up is an issue, and the office isn't equipped to handle them while we wait, so they remain in the classrooms. Keeping this population away from each other is an impossibility as many are not mentally aware enough to help us help them. There can be no distance between the teachers and students in this population as they have too many hands-on needs. They will be at constant risk. How many of those students are you willing to put at risk of possibly getting, and at worst, dying from this disease? To risk their lives at all is unconscionable, but to put them at risk first is criminal, in my opinion. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Next one is from Kimberly Laurie. Uh, good evening, board members, Dr. Volkmar and SBC USD district staff. First, allow me to say thank you for all of the hard work that you have been digging into as we as we prepare to return to our sites and our students to classes. I have a lot of questions and concerns in regards to our return to school, but the largest and most looming one on my mind deals with the initial virtual distance learning accessibility for our students. Like many of our students, I have a Kajit that has the one gig of daily internet Wi-Fi access and have come to find out that when holding my office hours, that one gig of Wi-Fi will only allow me about forty-five minutes of a Google meets and then it stops and I am literally done for the day. Can the I R T team or Dr. Volkmar please address how we as a district will address this issue for our students and staff members if we are going to initially return in a distance learning format with the expectations that students at the secondary level virtually attend two to three and possibly four classes daily? How will this be possible if they only have enough data to access forty-five minutes of a Google meets class before they run out of daily accessible data? Also, can Dr. Volkmar or one of the staff please explain why the fifty dollars that was allocated to all teachers to help offset our home internet was taxed as income? I believe that our understanding, I have conferred with several of my staff members of as well, was that would be a separate amount sent like a reimbursement when we attended conferences. I understand that our budget is very tight with everything going on, but as a teacher, I struggle with how to appropriately hold my students accountable for their assignments and attending virtual classes, knowing that a great many of them only have the one gig of data accessibility and have to.
Karen? Karen?
Yes, did you lose me?
Yes, we did.
Oh, my. How, where?
Just right. Correct.
I'm sorry?
Go back a couple of sentences.
I understand that our budget is very tight. Okay, sorry. I understand that our budget is very tight with everything going on, but as a teacher, I struggle with how to appropriately hold my students accountable for their assignments and attending virtual classes, knowing that a great many of them only have the one gig of data accessibility and have to make the difficult choices of which class or classes are the most important to show up to. I would really appreciate the board looking deeper into a more extensive data plan for students as part of the initial recommendation stated that we, as a district, also would like to offer a one hundred percent distance learning option as well. The current data accessibility in my experience will not support either students or staff in a distance learning environment to the levels that we are expected to be held accountable for. Thank you for your time. Okay, this one is from Dr. Anthony Leonardi. My name is Anthony Leonardi and I am a California resident currently in medical school, educated at Johns Hopkins and did my PhD work at the National Cancer Institute on T-cell function dysfunction and immunity. These degrees were enabled by a San Bernardino School District Employee Scholarship and a Governor's Scholarship for S A T nine performance that paid my deposit and my moving fees. I am indebted and proud to be a Californian and I plan on returning to California. The reason I believe that schools should not open or have indoor classes is that the novel coronavirus is too easily spread by air and it is too easily spread during asymptomatic periods. To put it simply, the virus is cunning and evil. It infects cells responsible for repairing the lungs and it infects T-cells that come to respond to the virus. While for children, the risk of death is very low, kids are still churning out new highly functional immune cells that resist the effects of the virus and are able to control it. Their families and the adults that work at the school are not so impervious. We see that adults are affected for a significant time with blood clots in veins and arteries, brain damage, nerve damage, heart damage, and of course lung damage, even if they were asymptomatic. Also, children are susceptible to a new form of vasculitis that causes their skin to shed, bleed and their hearts to leak, although this is not common. It would be a tragedy of public health to attempt to open now. It would increase the number of cases in the state, give workers risk of permanent disability and endanger families. It would be a tragedy of the public school system to overlook the inevitable and I can guarantee it would be an inevitable resurgence and catastrophe and endanger the people it serves. Unfortunately, we cannot rid the virus with any sort of stubborn resolution to return to normal. To open in haste and risk so many lives when we have several vaccine candidates in the pipeline with some optimistically projected to be available late fall would be tragic. Furthermore, if the vaccines are unable to confer immunity and rather simply make the disease course lighter, it would make sense to transition to a more virtually delivered curriculum and a virtual work environment, which would have been an extremely absurd idea in December and only a half absurd idea now. Sincerely, Anthony Leonardi. Next one is from a concerned secondary teacher. As a secondary teacher, I am very concerned with the plans we have heard for reopening schools. We all want to be back in school with our kids, but only if it is done safely and realistically. As far as time in the classroom for teaching, we are already limited as it is having to deal with everyday behavioral issues and go over P B I S skills. Even with smaller classes, we will undoubtedly have to now deal with students who do not follow procedures for helping everyone stay healthy and safe. With our students, especially secondary students, who understand the importance and still refuse to do so, will there be repercussions for them? Will there be somewhere else other than the classroom if they can't cooperate? Or will we be forced to endure a daily battle with repeating safety rules as we have been doing for years with P B I S? Especially since this can be a life-threatening situation. Why should I, my coworkers and other students be expected to put up with this type of behavior if it runs the risk of us or our loved ones becoming sick if they refuse to listen to us? Also, regarding secondary science STEM hands-on elective classes, what are the expectations for students regarding standards requiring them to do hands-on manipulations, labs, projects, performances? The suggested secondary schedule where teachers rotate and students stay does not work as equipment must be hauled around and sanitized after every usage. Also, students cannot be within a certain distance of each other and in no way do any of our classes have enough materials for individual labs or projects. There is not enough time for us in, I'm sorry, she didn't finish that sentence. There is not enough time for us to, and that ends. What are your expectations for us as teachers to do our jobs accordingly to state standards? Now that it is becoming a reality that children also are also affected by this virus, not just teachers, we have to consider all actions we take from here on out very carefully. We have a very high percentage of students in our district with diabetes, which is a population that can be severely affected by contracting this virus. I am anxious to get back. I miss my kids. There are schools in England who opened up with reduced classrooms and had to close indefinitely because students contracted the virus. It is very worrisome if we move too fast on making any rash decisions trying to get back to campuses too quickly. Thank you for your time. Uh, I have one from anonymous and it just asks, what does option one mean by virtual learning with soft opening? That, and my last one is from Zachary. And it just says, instead of doing hybrid, can schools go back to year-round? And that is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate that. And again, Dr. Volkmar, I know you take copious notes on there is many things in there that need to get back and make sure that our parents are clear on, so we appreciate you capturing those things. And again, thank you for your comments to our community. Moving on to action item six point oh, six point one, resolution ordering school district election for governing board members whose terms expire December eleventh, two thousand twenty, and I will read. The district has been notified of the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools that the election of school trustees is required to be held on Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty. It is required at this time that the resolution ordering school district election for governing board members whose terms expire December eleventh, two thousand twenty be adopted by the governing board and filed with the registrar of voters' office. Be it resolved that pursuant to Education Code fifty-three zero-two, the county superintendent of schools of this county is hereby ordered to call an election for the purpose and in accordance with the designations contained in the following specifications of the election order made under the authority of Education Code Section fifty-three, zero-four, fifty-three twenty and fifty-three twenty twenty. Specifications of the election order, date of election, Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty. Purpose election of governing board members. Polls will open at seven A M. and close at eight P M. Be it also resolved that the following governing board members are those whose terms will expire December eleventh, two thousand twenty, Michael J. Gallo, Margaret Hill, Gwendolyn Doughty Rogers, Scott Wyatt. Be it further resolved that the order of election and specification of the election order setting Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty, as the date for election of governing board members in the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education be approved. It's been moved and properly seconded. If there is no discussion, we will take the vote.
Madam, Madam President, I thought we already made this motion a long time ago. Like, um, when Danny, when, when we were elected, you and Abigail and I, we moved from a odd, odd number to a even number. Remember that?
Yes. This is the annual, don't they do annually?
Oh, we have to do it annually. Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. Okay.
Okay, no other discussion, then I will call for the vote. Dr. Flores.
Hi.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried. We are now at item six point two, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar.
Thank you, President Rogers, board. Just a, just a couple of comments before we get into a very brief presentation, actually. Uh, last week, we shared a very comprehensive plan about the research that our, our broad-based work group has been doing about reopening schools. And as you heard from public comment, uh, this evening, uh, opinions are varied across, across the spectrum. There are people that say bring all the kids back tomorrow. There, there are people that say do not bring anybody back until, you know, such time as we have a vaccine or whatever the trigger would be. So we recognize that there's, there's a great degree of uncertainty, uh, out there and we want to try to bring at least one piece of the puzzle to, uh, some degree of finality this evening. So we're just asking the board, uh, to, um, basically to confirm a decision you've already made. We talked about the possibilities around start date, uh, getting back to school two thousand twenty-one. Um, and we're just going to bring some information to you and our recommendation is that you confirm that date of August third. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Volkmar. I just have two slides. Daniel, um, you can bring those up. Yes, I will be brief, like Dr. Volkmar, um, earlier said, so number one is, is also what we brought to you last board meeting, that our recommendation is to stay with the calendar you've already adopted for the twenty-one, me, two thousand twenty-one school year. And that starts August third, which would be distance learning, um, starting on August third. And then the calendar would end on June the third. Um, we have broad representation on that committee. Um, yesterday I double-checked with each association, um, presidents and, um, they are all in agreement to stay with this adopted calendar. There is another option, and that's number two, where you would start two weeks later and end on the same date in June. The difference there would be you lose, um, a week in a winter break and it's spring break. Um, number three and four, after a lot of discussions with our business department and attendance accounting, those that we have crossed out because the fiscal impact due to P two and a required amount of days would makes this really unacceptable. We, it, it would be millions of dollars that we would lose. Um, attendance accounting, um, we need to have a, is, is saying that we need a hundred and thirty-seven days of instruction by the end of March to make sure we get the proper funding from the state. For Daniel, if you could go to slide two, and some of this is a repeat, but I just wanted to make sure that you do know that all four associations are in favor of your already board-adopted calendar. Um, and that committee is broad. It not only has, uh, the associations, it has district administrator, it has, um, office staff, so, and that committee's been in in place for as long as I can remember. The, the other reason we really like the original calendar, the one you've adopted is the first semester ends before winter break and the finals are done. Um, in the past, I know students had to cut, when they came back in January, they did finals. So I know, um, the teachers feel like that is the best thing to get those finals done before the students go on winter break. Another, um, reason we like the calendar, um, that is currently, um, adopted is that it maximizes the days of instruction before the state test occurs. So that's an important item and that's one reason we went to an early start years ago, so we wouldn't maximize. Just to reiterate, um, August third is not a date that employees will come back to work. They'll come back to work, uh, virtually, but they won't come back to work physically. So I just wanted the community to know that, um, that if this calendar adopted or re-adopted, maybe, um, that that August third date, students would be on a distance learning mode. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Okay, and thank you again for that, Tom. And so, board, this information came back in a short presentation because I do think we needed to be a little bit clear. There was comments and questions that were coming from the community as well as what decision was made. So we'll be taking action on this and I am going to begin the comments with Dr. Flores, followed by Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, uh, Tom. I really appreciate, um, your clarity on this, uh, and I also appreciate that all the unions are on board as well as our administrators are on board and, uh, and I've been contacted, uh, by many teachers and, uh, regarding, you know, their health and safety and, um, and also parents, uh, regarding their children. And as we heard Dr. Leonardi's, uh, letter, uh, of caution to us, I think that, uh, the fact that we're going to go back to distance learning echoes many, many, many of their concerns. Um, I, uh, I, I want to read something by, um, Eric Stephens. He's one of our teachers. Uh, says, we must learn from the wrong, uh, from wrong decisions that we've made and instead be resolute and patient in the coming months. A vaccine will be developed, uh, treatments will become available and the virus will be eradicated, eradicated hopefully. I urge our leaders in our district to prioritize human life above all other factors and understand that this virus will transmit based on our decisions, your decisions. If we choose to continue distance learning, lives will be saved. I repeat, if we choose to continue distance learning, lives will be saved. If we choose to return to school as normal, uh, and, and meet, uh, as normal, meaning physically, uh, a lot of a lot of lives will inevitably be lost. So it, it's really heartening to me that we are going to open up like a soft opening with distance learning. And, you know, as Dr. Leonardo said, there probably will be a vaccine available in the fall, the late fall. And to me, I will reiterate again that it's lives that are more important. Our, our families, you know, our children may be asymptomatic, and it doesn't matter if we, you know, if we take our temperatures and, and so forth, but we could be spreading, you know, the disease without even knowing. And to me, you know, our, our health and our safety and our, and our children's and families' lives matter. So I'm real, I'm really supportive of what the unions and the administrators and also parents. I, I've gotten tons of, of emails and texts and calls from parents. So and of course, there's another side. Some parents want them to, to come forth. But I don't think people know how dangerous this disease is. It's a very dangerous. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman.
Do we have parents on the committee?
Mr. Tillman, my understanding is that there were no, there were not any parents on that committee.
Which, well, can I ask a question, Mr. Tillman? Which, to which committee are you referring?
Wherever the, has there been a meeting of parents about this calendar?
Dr. Menares, did you cover calendar-specific issues in your live stream meetings with the parents?
No, Dr. Volkmer, we were focused on the how of returning to school, not the actual start date.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think it's important that we have a meeting and involve parents and hear what they say and allow them to be part of the process. And let me back up by saying no one listening in this meeting or listened to this meeting caused the coronavirus. It's a bad situation that we all have to deal with. And so we're just trying to approach the situation and make the best of it. And I say that so that we, we don't get really angry at each other because we realize there's not going to be the perfect way of educating kids that is, that's going to come out of this. It's going to be a bad situation, no matter how you look at it. So I think we should start from there. And I agree that safety should be first and foremost. But I also know that you even have husbands and wives in the same house that don't agree whether these kids should go to school or not go to school, right? So that is an issue. The, but it's a good point that came up tonight because it makes sense to me. If, if we're really having a problem with the one gig of data, have we addressed that? If, if, if in practical terms, one gig of data only gives you forty-five minutes a day for a, a, a meeting, then that is an issue. Is that the case?
Mr. Tillman, we'll, we'll have to bring some information back to you. That's not, that's not what I've heard, but I don't want to, I don't want to go by what I've heard. We haven't done any formal study in terms of does the KJ give enough power to extend through a day? We can certainly look, have our I T. People look, look at that.
Yeah, it's not the power, but it's the amount of data they're going to allow you to use before they cut you off. And, and, and in terms of, it's a big difference between using the internet and doing a, a meeting because it will use a lot more of your, your bandwidth.
But Mr. Tillman, on this, let me just ask a quick question because I know this is really important to the, the community and, and, you know, we, we, we attempted to do a good job at the last time we heard the presentation regarding the calendar date. And so the board did ask for some additional information about the calendar. And so I agree with you that that's an important thing, and I just, and we did tell Dr. Volkmer ensure that they need to go back and look at that just as the other request that we made. But on this calendar, we have to be very clear tonight on, on the decision we're making. We wanted to hear from the unions at the last meeting, and we did gather that information. And here we are needing to decide when school starts. And I said school again because not the brick and mortar.
But my point is this. And we can meet on the thirtieth. Well, fine. Somebody got hacked and they sat on a meeting anyway for the thirtieth. But, but, but my point is this, you, I don't know how you could say we're going to have virtual school starting on the third. If you really, I, I mean, if you don't address the, if it's a real issue that one gig of data gives you forty-five minutes worth of time on a computer, then kids can't have school. So how, so you're going to start school on the third and a, a large percentage of your, your school population doesn't have access to school? No.
But the safety issue is.
My point is this. So if you come back to us and we can't resolve that or it's going to take time to do it, that's when you could have another option of, hey, let's go to the other date. If we talk to the providers and they tell us it's going to take you X amount of time to do the contract and to increase your bandwidth, but to just vote on a start date without knowing that we're prepared to start on that date and provide learning to all our students. I, I don't, I don't understand what that gets me, other than you, you, you pick the day to start school and you're going to go live no matter what. And if kids really from a practical perspective can't participate, then you're not really having school.
We certainly want them to participate. We definitely want them to participate.
So, and I've said this in the past, the, the logistics should drive what the date is. The fact that you don't know whether the KJ's work or not, and we haven't talked to the parents at all, is a concern of mine. So I, 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 I think those are big things enough. And I'm not saying you won't have it on the third, but I say we ought to get together and meet again next Tuesday, have another meeting, and let's get the additional information. You guys can schedule a meeting with parents down, now, 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 at least offer it up to them and say, hey, we want to hear what your input is and how do you feel about starting on the third in just a virtual way and, and get a feel for some input at least where they're at. Because if I asked the question, did we, did you meet with the parents, then my next question would, would have been, what did the parents say? And did the parents want to go just virtual or do the parents want to have some physical education? Because it, it, it's, it's, it's simple for me. If I have teachers that want to come back to a site and I have parents that want their kids to come back to a site, of course, you'll have all the distance learning, you have all your P P E's in place, then that's a win-win for those groups. But i- if we, if we don't know that information, then we can't make that decision. But, and, and one other thing, because it's not on agenda, I heard from some teachers that said they'd rather use Zoom versus the Google class because Zoom allows them to do breakout sessions and a host of other things that the tool that we've given them cannot. Have we had a discussion yet with the, the teachers to determine whether or not they want to use Zoom and can we allow them to use Zoom?
Okay, and are, is anyone prepared to answer that second portion of Mr. Tillman's question?
Mr. Tillman, I, I alluded to the fact that we're surveying the teachers right now on their distance learning experiences. I'll double-check for you to see if that asks about alternatives to Google Classroom, including Zoom.
And, and I don't know if it has a board consensus about having another meeting on June thirtieth, but I think, I think it's important.
We want to hear. Okay, and let's, let's hear from the other comments, and then we can bow back to that. So, Mr. Gallo.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor of getting this thing underway and starting school for a whole host of reasons on the third. I mean, you postpone and defer, you buy into a whole lot of other issues that we were just, that we were just briefed on that is going to raise an entire series of other issues. So, you know, I think we put a mandate that we ensure students have enough bandwidth, et cetera, by August third to get distance learning to be effective. That would be my direction as a school board member. Now, I think I hear a lot of in-betweens and I hear, I've heard people on every end of the spectrum here. Parents, teachers, et cetera, from distance learning, all distance learning, and for a variety of reasons. They may be themselves at risk. They may have family members at risk. And hence, no matter what, they're not prepared to come back to school. And I, for one, am not going to force somebody to come back to school if they don't feel safe to do so. So, so that, that just means that I think until a vaccine or people feel safe, you need to at least provide a distance learning option for our teachers and students now, and for, for probably the foreseeable future. And this just means that we're going to have to manifest classrooms a bit differently, logistically. We should identify what teachers fall in the various categories. Some fall in the category of the distance only, they feel at risk, and we shouldn't place them at risk if they don't want to be. You know, if they feel they are and don't want to be. So classify those teachers. I'm sure we can match students whose parents and themselves feel the same way. And we have a complete distance learning environment. Now, I've heard the other side. They would love to have your kids, their kids come to school. They're not concerned about the virus. There's teachers that feel that way, and there's parents that feel that way. I'm not sure we're quite prepared to do that yet because quite frankly, the governor has a whole lot to say about that as to what restrictions and requirements that we're going to need to be meeting. So that brings the hybrid, you know, plan in place, which is a combination of distance learning and, and onsite learning. That to me is, is the most difficult and probably the most stressful on, on students and teachers. And, you know, when I just look at the double preps and, and all of the different ways, you know, that they would have to incorporate into their lesson plans and curriculum. And I think another option on the, the hybrid is figuring out how you can standardize a day for a, a week, basically, for each student. And, you know, they come in on the same days, the same times during the day. Their distance learning is specified hours at regular times. I mean, I'm hearing varieties of distance learning times, no set schedules. You know, that, that just, it's almost chaotic, if you ask me. And so I think what I'm saying is that we should really be flexible on how we actually roll this out. Again, some may want distance for the whole, you know, next year. Some may want distance for a little bit until they can prep their classrooms and get ready to come into school. And I think that we, we really should, you know, poll our teachers and poll our parents, as Danny mentioned, to see who feels comfortable doing what. Those, there's like basically three options, right? Yeah, you're either full distance, you're something in the middle, or you're full on onsite. And I would, I'd love to hear, you know, see what percentages everybody falls into and what piece of the pies are. And I think you could probably match teachers with students that would fit in all three of those categories. Now, that being said, starting off school in a total distance learning environment without having teachers meet their kids, you know, kind of like they did when they came and picked up computers, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we know how to do that safely. I would propose that even if we go with a full distance learning thing right up front, that we may consider having a time to, over the, over a week period or, or so of the first week from August third to whatever, the tenth, to have teachers be able to meet students personally. Hand out materials, come to school, keep inappropriate social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. For those students that wish to do so, because I think generating and creating that relationship is really important, especially as new students roll into new classes and, and only see somebody on, on a TV screen is not exactly a connection. And I know that many teachers are advocating that, that position as well. And just to be clear, the teachers' union didn't, to my knowledge, say this is the specific way we want to roll this out. They're just saying they'd like to keep with the August third calendar in whatever form that we roll this out in. And so I was not aware that the teachers' unions and others have weighed in on the methodology and approach for how we're going to roll this out. Like I said, there's a lot of hybrids here. And so, you know, when it's appropriate, I make the motion that we adhere to the August third calendar. But still keep flexibility open for how exactly we may roll this out and to do surveys, as Danny mentioned, on parents and as we're currently going through on teachers to see what camp that everybody kind of falls into. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Remind, I don't know, somebody, or volume is up. But we did, you know, the last, the last week's presentation was about exactly what you were sharing with the rolling out and the percentages of who wanted to do what. But again, I think our biggest concern was the safety factor of how to bring them back physically as well. So the calendar date is what's, what's, you know, at right now, too, but they did give some of those options.
Yeah, but what I'm suggesting, and that was a, that was a one-size-fits-all thing. And we didn't make a, we didn't make a recommendation or proposal on that. And I think it's a mistake to assume everybody's going to fall into that particular option that was presented. I think we're going to, we should make accommodations for individuals' needs, you know, we say we care, we say we care about people.
Dr. Menares.
We care about teachers, we care about students, and we ought to figure out how we can best support them in whatever camp that they fall.
Right. Dr. Menares, can you shed a little additional light on what those, those options and clarifications? And I do recall saying that, you know, the parents are going to have options. So I want them to hear that and make sure that that's what we did say.
That the parents, as well as the staff, will have options. What is happening right now is there is a letter that's being developed. It should be in the mail by Tuesday of next week, going to all of our families where we are, and it's a questionnaire, asking them for each one of their children in their, in their household. Are they interested in a distance learning model for next school year? Or are they interested in a blended model? And if they're not interested in either one, then they would put a comment in there. The reason we didn't give a traditional return is our schools don't have the space to be able to house all of our students at the same time and still do the six-foot distancing. But we, we also know that the fill-in blank for any family that's interested in that will provide us that data. So that's going out on by next Tuesday with an envelope for our families to return those questionnaires to our enrollment center because we know that there will be people housed there, that then we can upload all that data into our ARI system. And for any parent that would prefer to complete the questionnaire digitally, they will get a link or a Q R. Code also in the letter from Dr. Volkmer with the same information. So we're collecting that by student, district-wide. For any family that we do not get information from with this first crossover of the survey, I'm sorry, the questionnaire, then, then we will be able to create reports to give to our school principals, and then they can work directly with any of their families to fill in any of those missing pieces. On the employee side of the work, our human resource department, in conjunction with our I M. T., will be surveying all of our employees to find out similar information who needs to, because of medical needs or any other concerns, can return, cannot return all of that data. So we are working through that to get that data. So then we have, we can do that matching that, that both Mr. Gallo have, has referred to, and I believe, Dr. and I believe Dr. Mr. Tillman referred to that at the last board meeting. So when the data.
What I recommend is that you be very explicit and ask if they would want all, any one of the three. Not just leave it as a default if you wanna enter in. If I wanna see a full onsite thing, I wanna know what that is. And I want the question asked so that they can answer it directly. And you'll know how many people fall in what camp. If you leave it out, you're leaving one-third of the question unanswered. And you're expecting somebody just to put it in a remarks column or something. I, I think the questionnaire needs to be modified to add all three of those. Otherwise, you will not get an accurate representation of, of the data.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Okay, Ms. Wasos Medina.
Yeah, so my concern, of course, when I, I even posed this question on, on social media and, and asking, I both had many parents, many, many educators, many educators who have children in the district. And so you, you get half and half. You have those, you have those teachers that wanna start on the start date of August 3rd. And then you will have those that want it later on with educators. And then plus with parents, same thing, you have a mixture of both. My concern was always that if we're gonna start and start with having students enter school August 3rd, that's why my push was to push it back. Then we're not ready and we're not, we, I, I don't feel that, I'm confident enough to feel that we're, we're ready to start then and there. Now, that's why I asked for the presentation, when they presented it, and that's why I've been asking for this, is to have an idea, what are they gonna do? So my understanding was that they will start August 3rd, all virtual. I understand Danny, what you're referring to. My, that was the only reason why I'm more in agreeance to start August 3rd was because they were going to have it virtually in the beginning, which would be maybe, what, two weeks, a month? I don't know what that would look like, but I, I think it's two weeks. Then they would move into hybrid and, and having started, you know, the soft opening, having students come in. That is what I support. But if they're gonna have it, where they're gonna have the hybrid in the beginning, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it because I don't think we're there yet. There's too many things that we need to catch up on. And also, one of the, one of the concerns educators have, the teachers, is like, what are, what is the classroom gonna look like? Are they gonna move out desks? Many of them have shared with me that they prefer the desk stay in the classroom. And that if they have, you know, they know which items to remove, then they would be put in the request. But, so all of that conversation, has that been in play?
A bag over the chair.
Right, yeah, bag over the chair or something like that. But I know that they don't know, educators don't know what the district's plan is. But that is definitely one of the recommendations, to have it as is. And then request if they need things moved. But my whole point is if we start virtually, that would make sense. But if we do hybrid in the beginning where students are coming in August 3rd, I, I, I think that's the, it's too soon. And if we need to have another conversation, have more input, I do agree that we need more surveys. We need to have surveys that will show us exactly what it looks like. And then I, I'm curious to know, the, the calendar committee, so does it consist of parents or it doesn't consist of parents?
Abigail, I did check on that. And all parent groups were contacted to be on the committee. But I found out that nobody came to the meetings. They had, they had, I think, three meetings. But every parent group in the district, the large parent groups, obviously, they were contacted to be on the committee.
Hmm, okay. And then also with regards to having all the unions that supporting it. Like I said, I know that within those groups, there's many that do not agree with the start date. I'm just saying that if we start August 3rd, then the idea is to push the, the hybrid model, you know, later in, in the month. Or if not, I mean, depending either two weeks or a month out, that they wouldn't start hybrid, they wouldn't start the hybrid in the beginning once school starts. I think we're not fully prepared for that. And, and I believe many teachers feel the same way. The current concerns are for student safety, for staff safety, educator safety, and, and parents who are coming in, making sure that we're fully prepared to do that. And so that's my, if we're gonna, if they're gonna pass it August 3rd, having it hybrid in the beginning, then I, I would be really concerned and may not necessarily support it.
Ms. Medina, just to be clear, the hybrid is not being recommended to start at the beginning of the school year. In the presentation last week, the earliest that we thought that we can have all systems in place and everything ready would be September 28th, and that's the earliest that we think. And that's pending, that's assuming that everything runs exactly the way it needs to, all PPE arrives, and that the health concerns around, you know, the guidance from our governor and from our local county does not say that even if we're ready on the 28th, that we can't, right? So there's, we, we just are constantly monitoring. We heard in our public comments that there has been spikes and, you know, we're all watching. So there, but there was never a recommendation to start the first day of school in a blended model. We're not ready to do that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yes, thank you for clarifying that. But I also do see where parents maybe, may started working, and, and, you know, individuals may have, may have started working. Then providing that opportunity, remember what we did in, in those organizations that were able to do childcare, still look at that for the younger children up to the age of 11, and still providing that for parents as, as a means right now while they're doing this.
Yes, and we still have those available, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Quickly, in terms of your question around furniture, not sure where, I, I've heard that the teachers were concerned about that. I remember being a teacher and being very, my furniture was very important to me, especially when I finally got all my chairs matching.
Right.
We have no intention of moving furniture out. We met with our, our managers today, and I emphasize that that is not a necessary use of time. So I'm, we are telling everybody, do not move furniture, you do not need to move furniture. That is just not where we need our custodial staff spending their time on moving furniture. So I'm glad you brought that up. For anybody who is listening right now, that has never been part of the guidance. I'm not sure where that came from, but it, it's not in the guidance now. We have recommended not to move it.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wasos Medina. And again, thank you, Dr. Menares. We definitely needed to make sure we had that clear. Dr. White, I believe you're up next.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And I probably have to echo a lot of what my colleagues have already said. So I'll try to not repeat many of the things they've already stated because I do agree with most of their, their comments and their opinions on starting back. Glad Danny brought up Zoom because I, I have heard from some of our staff and teachers. And, you know, Zoom definitely, in, in my own opinion and what I've seen, what I've worked with, is, is a much more user-friendly platform that has a lot more accessories to it and tools for our teachers, especially since we're, you know, we're gonna be starting with distance learning. And Dr. Menares, thank you for clarifying that. I mean, we got hit with a lot of information last week. And I know, have to go back and even look at some of the presentations just to make sure we're accurate with our information that we're saying. Cause it, it was a long night, as we all remember, and a long morning. So it sounds like we will still be on distance learning. And I wanna make sure that until September 28th, if that's correct. And then that's a tentative date even at best for hybrid learning and teaching. So I think we're all in agreement that, you know, August 3rd obviously is a distance learning model completely. But I also, and agreement with a lot of our, my colleagues have, are spoken in regards to parent input and parent surveys and just their participation as well. I also believe that, you know, we, we need to really find out, and maybe we already know this already, of how much of our workforce is ready to return to the workplace as well. You know, I, I know we have a lot of staff who have underlying conditions or for whatever reason, you know, they fit one of the categories for, you know, being at high risk, whatever it may be, or childcare. So those are all concerns as well, as what is our capacity with our workforce coming back, you know, August 3rd? And, and I know a lot of our teachers have voiced, you know, they're still doing distance learning. Those that, you know, are willing and want to physically report to work to their classrooms, would like to teach out of their classrooms for distance learning. So, you know, I think that's a great idea and a model I support. But definitely, along with my colleagues, I think we need to go slow here before we go fast. I definitely think we need to start distance learning and, you know, see what happens in their future. And, you know, be ready for the flu season when it comes. You know, we know that when flu season comes, high risk of second wave hitting us again, which they're talking about a lot now. So we gotta be able to jump back and forth if we need to, to go back to distance learning full model. If we're in the hybrid at that time, we may need to step back, so to keep that in mind as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers, if I can just add something? Because I think this is where some of the confusion may lie amongst our employee groups and maybe even with our board. It's that concept of that soft opening that was shared last board meeting. And, and what does that look like and, and how are we going to do that? And let me just share that the intention of the soft opening is this idea of having a small number of children who we know need some additional supports coming into our schools in small numbers. And I'm, I'm talking very small numbers, our schools would figure that out. But the, but what we wanna make sure is, how do we create safety nets for our children while keeping our staff and our students safe? And, and, and we can stay 100% distance learning, but we all know that there are some groups of children that that didn't work for. And so as we build our, our capacity of our staff to provide even more robust distance learning because we know they had to jump into this very quickly, finding ways to, to do the soft opening. So today, we had our first meeting with our SBT negotiations. And we just started an initial dialogue around soft opening. And it's very clear that we're, we're going to develop common definition, common expectations around it. And how do we meet that double goal of keeping students and staff healthy and safe while providing educational opportunities for the children that we know need that because the distance learning on its own was not enough in the spring? So we will come to a resolution. I have complete confidence in the negotiations. I have complete confidence in our teaching force because I know that we have the answers. So we just sat down at the table to make that, to start that conversation. I think that's where the confusion lies. But I just want the board and our community to know that the intent behind the soft opening is to really just have that, a safety net for the children that we know need a bit more than faith than digital teaching and learning. And we'll figure out what that looks like and what that sounds like prior to getting into the, the hybrid. So I, I hope that that helps the board to understand. I think that's where the, the misunderstanding took place.
Thank you, Dr. Menares, as well as the, making sure that everyone's clear that the planning is continuing on. And I, I, you know, and I hear the 28th or whatever date that is, I caution again for us to know that we don't know if we will be ready. I mean, it's a date, and I, and I almost was like, why do we even put it there? But I get it, you're aiming towards something, but we just have to be very clear. That's why we're back at the table again today. Safety will trump everything. And if it's, if it's the 30th when safety happens, it won't happen on the 28th. So that just has to be clear. And we need to let our teachers and everyone know that everyone is going to be involved in this planning because they are the ones that are going to have to be on the front line doing the work. So I hope that that's the message, just being clear, that we're going to err on the side of safety. And then we're gonna err on the side of making sure who's going back. So there's a lot of things, I agree with you, Mr. Gallo. There's a lot of things that still has to happen, and I don't believe the 28th might even be that date. So that's just my thoughts. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just wanna go off agenda just for a minute because I saw the names of the retirees in the Sun newspaper today. And just wanna say congratulations to the retirees. Rarely read it, but the names are there. The other thing, my colleagues have made some interesting, interesting comments, and I will not repeat any. I, I will support the August 3rd day. And I think one of the things we need to be concerned with is we are going back to school one day at a time. You know, August 3rd may not be what we want it to be, and it may be better than what we want it to be. So I think if we focus not only, not only 2021 school year, but one day at a time, I think we will be okay. Now, one of the things that we do in schools, we, we have for years, some people like Apple, some like PCs. So some like Zoom, some like Google, Google Classroom. Is it possible for us to use, the teachers have a choice. The ones who prefer the Zoom, if they can connect with textbook in the schoolwork, and it works for them. And I understand Zoom has more options than Google Meets. But then I'm sure there's some people who have not tried, who are using Google Meets, which is what's, uh, Google Classroom, which is going on now, have not. So I'm just, I don't know if that's a possibility, that you could use one of both. But I think it would be good if teachers are comfortable with what they have to do with their students, that we, we support them as much as we can with that. And again, even when it comes to August 3rd, my, my concern is every, every child is safe and every employee is safe. So that's my top priority. And then I heard someone mention, and I think it was one of the comments last board meeting about our students getting behind, well, everybody's behind because it's a nationwide thing. So, you know, we can look at it as everybody's behind, everybody's at the same, at the same place. But we'll get there, but we need to get there with safety in mind first. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Dr. Flores?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do believe, Madam President, that based on what Danny said, that we're directing Dr. Volkmer to survey our parents in terms of getting their input. Is that what you understand?
I believe he asked the question about the input on the calendar date, whether the parents had. And, and I believe Tom answered that it was put out there. I don't, I don't know what happened as to why. And so the other things that Mr. Tillman is bringing up, very valid, has to do with when we begin to instruct people to enter back into the, the, the actual school sites. So I'm trying to keep these two separate. And we're, the board to, to, you know, we have to narrow this down. The third, and if something goes awry, I think like Dr. Hill just said, we know things can change. But right now, we're talking about, this is the date that school will start so that everyone knows with Chromebooks and Kijits and all of those things. If we need to add more to it, I'm in agreement with it. If we can switch over to Zoom, I'm in agreement with that too. I think we have, what, six and a half weeks, something like that, left to go. But again, this would have to happen no matter what. And so we're trying to connect kids back. So I did hear that question, but I also heard that it was, it was opted out there to the parents. And I'm not sure what happened there. And we certainly would, we can warrant more input. And if the board also, I, I just think we need to make a decision, you know, based on what we know because we're not.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement to open August 3rd with distance learning. And, and we don't know the rise of COVID cases. Our county is one of the ones that is rising and rising and rising. And so, you know, we need to, to make sure that our, our, our employees and children and families are safe. And I need to repeat, how are we gonna protect our teachers? What if they get sick? They're gonna go on workers' comp? How much is that gonna cost? Are they gonna have to sign disclaimers to, you know, do physical, you know, teaching? Are we gonna protect their health? I'm worried, I'm worried about our, our black and brown parents because they are four times, four ti, African Americans are four times more susceptible to COVID. Latinos are two times more, Asians are 50%. And the majority of our, our population is black and brown. And so I, and we have a high poverty level. You know, how are they going to be able to, you know, afford healthcare if they get it? I mean, there's other consequences to our decisions that we make as a board. And, and I, I really think that, I think if we start, like Danny said, let's find out who needs more gig, more broadband, you know. Let's, you know, make sure that we find the kids that need devices still. Let's, let's, let's do all of that. Like you said, Madam President, there's six and a half weeks before we actually. before we actually start. Let's just, you know, get ready, period, for that. And, and do what we need to do. So that's, that's all I wanted to, to restate, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And then I'll take Mr. Tillman's comments, and then we will look for the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, there's something that's confusing going on. Dr. Menares just said that her proposal was to have some kids on site. And after that, everyone says we agree to do virtual only. So we're not going to address what Dr. Menares is saying, I guess.
Of opening the way down the road.
No, she's not talking about, she's talking about the 3rd of August.
Well,
Okay, let's be clarification.
Right. So we are in negotiations right now with SBT. We would hope that we can be ready to move with the soft opening, because we would have worked through all of that with SBT within the first week of school. But if we're not ready for that, then we won't do that. Our goal sometime in those first two months is to have some way to connect our students and our teachers and our families physically among small numbers.
Only point was that's contrary to what everyone's been saying in terms of starting. No one said tonight they wanted to do virtual learning and start us, some of the kids come back on the site on the first week. I, I mean, I did, I said, if you find parents and kids that match, and you can do the PPEs, I think it's a good idea. But I, I will say again, I'm really saying that we should meet again on the 30th. I'm going to tell you why too.
Do you have a meeting on the 30th? We have, we have it scheduled, yeah.
I thought we went all the way through.
And is it to discuss?
We will add it if it's not. We, we will add it. We will.
Because another big item is sports.
Right.
We, we, we can't wait two weeks to talk about how we're going to address sports. But, and, 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 and what we're doing is chaotic. I'll give you a perfect example. If we continue to have virtual meetings, but at some point you tell people it's okay to get back together, then why are we still doing virtual meetings?
I think we're mirroring what we're saying. That's what we're.
My point is, we're having virtual meetings because we know there's a, a risk that if we come back together, that someone might get sick. And why incur that risk? But that's the confusion with all this. The other big part that is complicated in the history of the district. I know at least in the last 25 years I've been here, we've never not have a school coincide with parents' work. So the stress in the community as the governor himself has opened up businesses. People are going back to work. The county has said that all employees have to come back on June the 29th. So now you're forcing parents to find some other way. Or, I guess to leave your kids at home. I don't know what they're going to do. Because, and, and, and it's specific. They're saying you, you can no longer say that you're staying home because you don't have childcare. There is no option to get paid for, to get paid for staying home because you have kids. And you can't use that as a reason for wanting to telecommute. You can still say you have, you're high risk, but other than that, you're coming back to work. So and I, I'm not saying I have the perfect answers, but I am saying there's a strain on parents now because who's going to watch the kids when they go back to work? It's always been, part of it has been when we have to get past the summer, that school, your kids will go to school and they'll be in school while the parents are at work. So we're saying right now, if we do virtual, after we get to the summer, then the parents are going to have to find some other way of having childcare for their kids. And two, I'm real confused about the reason why I want to meet on the 30th, confused about the schedule. To me, parents go for a regular school day. We were talking about a two hour in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. That's not a school day. You still impacting parents in terms of how do they do that? How does a parent get a kid to school, to school? And, and you say you have less transportation. So you're really going to depend on parents providing transportation. So how does a parent provide transportation for their student from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00, or the other one you guys had on paper was from 1:00 to 3:00? Who could do that? So, 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 so if the, if the schedule is not a regular schedule that exists right now, then I don't know how that works. And, and I guess that's why I'm looking for more info. And realizing we're not going to have the, the perfect answers, but maybe, maybe that's what we should talk about. And, and I'll vote affirmative for this of August 3rd start date, knowing that we come back on the 30th. If, if, if Dr. Volkmer comes back and says, I've talked to the, the, our vendors, and there's no way possible that we can increase the bandwidth by a certain date, or Jenny says if we do it, it's going to cost another $5 million, and we don't have the money. If something like that happens, we need to have a discussion, because
I agree.
I don't know how many, like, how many of our students use the KJ to have access to the internet? Is it a large portion?
I, who, Dr. Volkmer?
I don't, I don't know the exact percentage. Mr. Tillman, we can find that out for you.
That'd be another thing we need to go on, uh, if we need, we are going to meet on the 5th, on the 5th.
The, we will make sure that as much as that information is being captured tonight, very that what you're, you're requesting. But again, all of these scenarios is, there is not a perfect scenario, and I agree with you. But what I do know, safety trumps it all.
And then my last, my last.
Certain things, we can't do it no matter what we plan for.
And my last point is, in terms of the teachers meeting the students before they come back to school, are we talking about doing that like a teacher conference? Where you schedule the meeting? Are you talking about having the whole class at the same time?
No, we cannot have the whole class at the same time, but that would be not within the six feet of distancing. So that's why we've got the teeth, we, we just today, when we worked with our site leaders, gave them some parameters around the minimum people who should be on a site team to start this implementation process. And we want the schools to figure that out. We don't have the space, Mr. Tillman, to be able to bring all students back in a safe environment in our, in each classroom.
And then I'll end with, I think if you want anyone to see the light of a school, you're better off doing it sometime in August, because for everything I hear, the virus is going to coincide with the regular flu, flu season, which maybe we're talking about September 28th, it's going to be peaking. So you're not going to have anybody come back to school September 28th. Thank you.
Which is definitely the concern with getting some education versus waiting, you know, forever. So thank you, Board, for your comment. Dr. Flores, did you get back on? Okay, you're back on.
Been back on. I got, I got knocked off.
Okay, so the board, here we are confirming the start date for 2021 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education confirms and/or amends the start date of 2020, 2021 year. But we are, we're not amending, we're not amending. I'll read it again. Be it resolved that the Board of Education confirms the start date of the 2020, 2021 school year as August 3rd, 2020.
I'll make the motion second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly. Second, let's take a vote. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Lynn Rogers, aye. Motion approved. Thank you so much. I don't know if you have anything else, Dr. Volkmer. Do you not have anything else to?
We're good to go. Thank you, Board.
Okay, so thank you. We're about to move to adjourn, but I do want to remind everyone, if, if memory serves us all correct, we're meeting again, because that's what we had agreed to throughout this whole budget and everything. And we will be adding those additional items if need be to report and give us information on what was discussed. I don't see on the agenda that it was, it was being captured, but are you capturing those things, Dr. Menares? What we, I know you were doing a double duty, so maybe Dr. Volkmer was, but.
I have notes as well.
Okay, I, I have things captured as well. We'll go over it tomorrow morning.
Okay, great.
Rogers, I do want to confirm, Board, you are scheduled for June 30th for a special board meeting.
Correct.
And that's because you had the public hearing on the budget tonight. You have to approve the budget on June 30th, statutory, and again, we'll add anything, as many follow-ups as we can to this.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Is somebody going to say meeting adjourned, or am I? All right, great. We are moving to adjourn. Thank you all for bearing with us tonight. We appreciate you, and we will see you again in a week. Good night, everybody, and God bless. Good night. And we're together.
Good night, good night.
All right, guys.
Good night.